Good morning. The May 28, 2020 meeting of the Prince George's County Planning Board will now come to order. Today, our schedule is at 10:00 a.m. we have administrative items, which are 3A, 3C, and 3D. And then at 10:30, we will continue with our development review items. So it's good to see everybody, including Rapunzel there. So you know who I'm talking about. Okay. And I just wanted to take a moment. We'll go do our announcements later. I'm just going to start with our administrative items first. And I think the first couple of items that we have are CB 20 and CB 22. So can we start with that?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Ms. Hightower.
And members of the planning board. Raina Hightower for the record presenting CB 20 to you all. CB 20 amends the subdivision regulations by permitting the county council to waive the public safety surcharge fee countywide by approving a resolution. Staff is not clear if the intent of the bill is to waive the public safety surcharge fee or the adequate public safety facilities mitigation fee. The section of the subdivision regulations being amended under this bill seems to discuss the adequate public safety facilities mitigation fee. Waiving either of these fees for specific projects reduces revenue for police, fire, emergency, medical services, or the ability to address public safety infrastructure adequacies throughout the county. The bill should be clarified to determine which fee the county council intends to waive. If the intent is to waive the public safety surcharge fee, then revisions to the bill should be made under Section 10-192.11, which is the Finance section of the Prince George's County Code, not under Section 2412201, which is the subdivision code, which addresses adequacy for public facilities. Staff recommends that the planning board vote to oppose CB 20 2020 as drafted with the above-mentioned explanation.
Thank you, Ms. Hightower. Does the board have any questions? Madam Vice Chair?
No questions.
Okay. Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Commissioner Dornar?
No questions.
Okay. Commissioner Geraldo? We don't have Commissioner Geraldo right now. Okay. Thank you. Okay. No questions. So is there motion?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Bailey moves to oppose with explanation.
Second, Commissioner Washington.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Indicate by saying aye, Madam Vice Chair.
Aye.
Commissioner Dornar?
Aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0. Thank you. The next item we have is CB 22 2020.
Good morning, Madam Chair and board members. This is Derek Brelage, Acting Deputy Planning Director.
Good morning.
Good morning. Council Bill 22 amends the zoning ordinance, and specifically, it changes the uses allowed in the residential suburban, or RS, zone. For a qualifying property, any use permitted by right in the employment institutional area or EIA zone would now be allowed in the RS zone as well. Snap has identified a single property that would qualify to use this text amendment, and it is a property you are actually familiar with and know as Willowbrook, a 639-acre property on Leland Road, just east of 301, that has previously been approved under the RS zone for up to 800 homes. The text amendment would therefore allow that property to convert its existing approvals to employment uses similar to those that are found on the adjacent Collington Business Center, a property I think you're also familiar with, a large area of flex space and other types of uses on the west side of 301. Given the adjacency of the Collington Business Center, the new uses proposed by the text amendment for the Willowbrook property are not necessarily inappropriate. However, this is a significant change in allowed uses, and we believe that a significant change like this should be accomplished via the master plan process and not via a text amendment. In fact, the Bowie Master Plan update, which covers this property, is already underway, providing a ready vehicle to change the zoning on this property if that turns out to be a sound move for the county and the county council. The master plan process will provide more time for community input and more time for staff analysis about the pros and cons of changing the land use on the Willowbrook property from residential to industrial and institutional and employment. Therefore, staff recommends opposition to the text amendment with the explanation that a rezoning of the property should be considered as part of the ongoing Bowie Master Plan process. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Brelage. And the staff memo is pretty comprehensive. Let's see if there are any questions for you. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Commissioner Dornar?
No questions.
Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, move to recommend a staff, move to approve staff's recommendation with an explanation.
Second, Commissioner Washington.
Motion by Vice Chair Bailey and second by Commissioner Washington. Is there any discussion? Madam Vice Chair?
But aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Dornar?
Aye.
The ayes have it 4-0. Thank you. So next, we will go to Item 3C, which is a Parks and Recreation item. It's a FY 20 year-end spending request. Let's see if we have our folks on.
I am here. Good morning, Chair Hewlett, members of the planning board.
Good morning.
For the record, Melissa Ford, Operating Budget Manager with the Department of Parks and Recreation. Before you today is an operating budget request to use projected personnel savings in the amount of $1,754,570 to help fund the purchase and the completion of several high priority items within the department. The memo before you does give insight as to those items that we have identified, and we do request your approval to use this funding to support these items. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you again, Ms. Ford. Your memo is also very detailed and very clear. Let's see if there are any questions. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Commissioner Dornar?
No, no questions. The only things that I had raised, I think I emailed Bill Tyler and Ms. Ford earlier, so I had some questions about whether or not we could use funds in a couple of different ways for some maintenance requests and stuff that I think are ongoing. So I don't know if you guys have had a chance to review the question items.
Commissioner Dornar, we have. I'm sorry. I think that's Bill's on the line as well.
Okay.
Yes. Good morning. This is Bill Tyler for the record, Director. And Commissioner Dornar, we have responded to your questions and requests. Very good, I might add, and we will send those to you today if they're not already in your inbox.
Okay. Yeah, I don't see them in there yet, but I'll look for them later on then. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. So is there a motion?
Moved in for it. Commissioner Dornar?
Is there a second?
Second, Bailey.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Well, I should have taken the roll, but it sounded like everybody. Were there any nays or abstentions? Okay. So it's unanimous 4-0. Okay. Thank you. Next is Item 3D, Department of Finance item, the March 31, 2020 projections.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Joe Zimmerman for the record, Secretary Treasurer for the Commission.
Good morning.
A few brief remarks, if I might, regarding the two memoranda that you have in front of you.
Yes.
And I will start with the enterprise fund, because that is where I have a concern. And don't read that to mean problem, just a concern. As you know, the, many of, almost all the facilities in Parks and Rec are closed, have been closed since mid-March. They are just now beginning to reopen, and we are seeing that reflected in these projected results for June 30, in that revenue in the enterprise funds is expected to be under budget by about $4.6 million. That will be partially offset by the reduction in expenditures of $1.4 million, but overall, we expect a net loss in the enterprise funds, and this includes the subsidy from the rec fund of over $3 million this year. That's a concern. What is also concerning, and this is something that I've brought to staff's attention, and staff is on the call, and we have detailed questions, we can certainly draw on them. I have lots of lifelines here, which is something I like to have in these presentations. This will result in a deficit cash position, considering expected accounts payable and accrued payrolls at June 30. Now, that's concern. That's something we need to figure out how to address. Will it require an increased subsidy across from the rec fund? Will it resolve itself over time? Where are we going with rates and charges? Because there was an effort to begin to inch those up, which I suspect will be stifled with the current demand problems as well as economic problems in the area. So we expect to see a cash deficit of about $500,000. Now, what that means is that the enterprise fund will be borrowing monies from the park fund and the rec fund, who have plenty of cash. So this is not an issue of concern broadly for the Prince George's funds. It's a technical matter that we're going to need to resolve through the budget process. And John Crowell and I have discussed it. Staff is looking at options. I just bring it to your attention for full disclosure, so that you're aware, and begin that conversation that you'll hear more about as the year goes on in fiscal '21. So, that's the enterprise funds. And if you'd like, we can do questions on those now, or we can, I can hit the tax funds very briefly, and then we can delve into whatever level of detail you'd like.
Okay. So let me see if there's any questions at this point. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Commissioner Dornar?
Yeah, so in terms of the overall fund net loss, how much of that, it seems like the majority of it is all COVID-19 related, so it was probably a lot of incurred losses over March and not necessarily over February and January, and/or prior months for that matter. Can you verify that? And then do we think that those, where are the biggest losses, I think would be a helpful thing to know. So when I'm looking through the estimated or projected losses and trying to figure out like what's the most hardest hit sort of part of the fund, like half of it looks like it's from the sports and learning complex. Yeah, I'm trying to figure out like how much of that might come back? Is that just like canceled events that aren't going to be recouped later on, because it's just not going to be reprogrammed if we were to open tomorrow? Or is that just basically like stuff that we might get later on if events get kind of pushed back and rescheduled? Because if it's just a straight-up loss, then yeah, we'll need to look at transferring in funds, and hopefully we have enough of a balance to actually cover that and to smooth things out. And going forward, we might be fine. But if we were to get hit with another wave, the second wave of COVID-19, if we reopen and have to shut down again, we might need to look for grant funding from the state in general, from the State Assembly, or from the federal government maybe to make up some of those losses? Or are there other revenue streams that we could do instead of just sort of siphoning off of our other departments who have been doing a fairly good job and weren't hit as hard?
We have staff here who won't get into too much detail, but generally speaking, I suspect these losses are permanent, that, you know, the big track meet that was canceled back in March, for instance, obviously won't come back for another year. We're four weeks from the end of the fiscal year effectively, so our ability to recover it in a year is probably zip. Overall, I think the, when we'll talk about this, we get to the tax funds, there are more than sufficient revenues in dollars available to cover these losses internal to Parks and Rec. I don't know of any current ability to draw on federal or state resources to cover enterprise fund losses. That may come. I don't know. I am concerned about the level of money they're printing at the federal level, frankly, but that's an economic discussion, and with your expertise is far and way greater than That's the brief gist of it. And I think staff is delving into this as well to try and figure out, is this something that will recover as we reopen? Certainly, a second wave is concerned. If we remain closed longer, how is that going to affect things? I think we'll have more information as time goes on. But again, it's not an immediate crisis, we can't pay the bills in any way, shape, or form. That's the good news takeaway from this. And we'll talk about that in the tax funds a little bit in greater detail.
Okay. Yeah, and then in terms of, if we were to objectively kind of look at like where do we take the biggest losses from? If some of these are programs that are Parks and Rec's kind of programs on exercising or different things that are classes and stuff, we might want to start to think about how we would handle this, and we don't have to make a final decision, but how we would handle this if we get hit with another second wave, or if we were to stay closed for longer. Schools, for instance, are going online in a lot of places, like the whole summer session is online for quite a few universities. Could we do that with our Parks and Recs fund? Like if we have yoga classes or martial arts class?
We are doing that. We are doing that. We're doing camps online. We're doing virtual camps and all sorts of exercise things, yoga and things like that that they're doing now.
Okay. Yeah. Any way that we can kind of diversify, I think, would be helpful in these times. It's not going to actually resolve the $3 million net fund loss, but it might help kind of alleviate some potential future losses. So if you could break down, I think, a little bit later on, the major costs, like where that's isolated in, I think that would be helpful for us to understand what decisions we need to make going forward.
And we're also working, you know, with the county government, you know, regarding recouping what we can to just, and FEMA and CARES and things like that. Okay.
Then I want to ask one other question. How is this going to affect us on our bond ratings? Do we think that if every single municipal entity and county government who has bonds all have a loss, say it's the exact same percentage, do we think that the bond rating companies would just keep stable the ratings for everyone if they took an equal share loss? Or are we going to get penalized from these kinds of losses later on if we had a higher share loss than other similar government?
Difficult to say at this moment. We're still, you know, bond rating agencies are in the very beginnings of understanding what the effects of this are going to be. And again, given our level of fund balances and ability to withstand an economic disruption like this is far stronger than many governments, I would suspect it would not have an immediate effect on bond rates.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Sure. Tax funds. To end on good news, as Betty likes to call me, I'm learning, Betty, slowly.
Thank you.
And I'll just hit very brief points, because it's all good from a fiscal perspective. Obviously, we've got many challenges to deal with, but finance is not a challenge for the commission at the moment. That's your takeaway today. Property taxes, we expect to attain full the budget in its entirety, perhaps slightly above, unlike Montgomery County. Side of the commission, we will be there. Interest revenues, we expect to be above budget. However, interest rates in our investment window are under. They're going down. We don't expect that to repeat next year. But briefly, in the administration fund, we expect a favorable variance of about $1 million on revenue. We expect a favorable variance on expenditures of about $5.7 million, which means that fund balance in the written administration fund will actually grow to a total of about $68 million next year, of which 2.7 is for contingencies, 65 million is available to be appropriated for various uses as needed. In the park fund, revenues also have a favorable variance of about $2.3 million, and expenditures a favorable variance of about $6.2 million. So there, we will see a fund balance at the end of the year of about $129 million. It was budgeted to be reduced by 18.8 million. It will actually be reduced by about 10. You know, we call a significant portion of that fund balance is allocated to CIP in this year, and that has happened. So positive results from a budget perspective in the park fund. Similarly, in the rec fund, we have positive results even though we expect to be under revenue budget by about $3.5 million. That's directly due to the closure of programs and facilities. However, that will be offset by favorable variance in expenditures of about $12.3 million for a variety of reasons we show in page four of my memo. So overall, that fund will grow its fund balance by about $7.4 million as opposed to a budgeted reduction of $1 million for a total of $54 million. And this is why I reference, the Prince George's side of the commission has abundant fund balances to compensate for the losses in the enterprise funds, which, unlike Montgomery's enterprise funds, are not fully self-supporting. They never have been. They are what we kind of refer to in my business as enterprise-like, meaning we'd like to carve them out and see them revenue versus expenses separately from the rest of the budget, but they have never been self-supporting. The commission has made a public policy decision to subsidize those operations to enhance access and utilization of those facilities by the citizens of the county. So overall, the finances are strong. They are becoming stronger in fiscal '20. '21 is a bit of a mystery, although we think we will be solid on our property tax revenues. And going forward, the staff is doing everything they can to mitigate expenses. You've got good, competent people there, and they're working hard to keep things going. And with that, I'll entertain questions.
Joe, this is Commissioner Geraldo. What makes you think that we're going to be, that the property tax revenue is going to go up or stay stable?
This year or next year?
This year.
Well, this year, the money's in the bank. So, right? That's known. Next year, the manner in which the state assesses property is our friend to a degree in that every three years, they assess a third of the properties in the county, so that any decline in property tax will go down slowly, not like a cliff like sales tax or income tax. This is why the county governments are in a little better position than the state government. State government, about half their budget is sales tax, and that can change in a week. Another big, huge part of their budget is income tax. That can change in a quarter. Property tax changes much more slowly. That curve moves slowly over a triennial period. So we have the assessments for '21. The bills will go out in another six or eight weeks, and we're confident those monies will be forthcoming. I think if there's a question, you can call. Pardon?
I'm thinking more about collection in the event, in the event there's, you know, an increase in foreclosures.
That can be an issue, but upon transfer, they will be collected. It could be a cash flow challenge, more so than a revenue challenge, if that makes sense. Cash flow, I'm not concerned about. We've got sufficient reserves to cover pretty much, you know, a pretty significant disruption in cash flow. So that's not a worry. The county, as I suspect, and I have not checked, I admit, has probably suspended their tax sale for this year, as have other counties. However, in Maryland, our collection rate is something we brag about in New York, because tax sale occurs within the fiscal year. So any properties that haven't paid their taxes, subject to tax sale within the year. So the collection rate is generally almost 100%. You'll get hung up a bit with properties that are in bankruptcy, but I've never seen a bankruptcy judge, and I was a tax collector for well over 10 years at Queen Anne's County, never saw a bankruptcy judge discharge property tax or the penalties. So it's a timing issue, not a revenue issue, to sum up what I've just said.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sure.
Is that it, Mr. Zimmerman?
I'm.
Done? Okay. Thank you.
I'm good.
Okay. So I see our hair is growing, but okay.
Are my roots showing? It's covered here.
No, it's not. Okay. So let me see if there's any additional questions. Madam Vice Chair?
No question.
Commissioner Dornar?
Yeah, so I have a question, just to cut a comment on Commissioner Geraldo's question. So I think that the answer that you got was more towards kind of more obscure kind of parts of the property tax in terms of bankruptcies and other things. For general homeowners, we're not going to have a cash flow problem there, at least in the next six to 12 months, for the majority of properties, probably at least in our county, because foreclosures, they're not going to happen. Most of the properties, 60% of the mortgage market is, or probably 75% at this point, is government-owned in terms of on the secondary side, and those payments are being advanced, even if homeowners aren't able to make the payments. There's a variance program, so those payments will be, continue to be advanced to servicers and to investors as well as on the tax side. So I don't think we're going to have a problem with that in this potential, in this actual fiscal year. Down the road, who knows? But that is something that is definitely on sort of the eye of, at a higher level than federal levels. I think we're okay there, because that's actually probably the majority of the problems that we saw in the past in this county, and that could come up if there wasn't an intervention on the mortgage side. But my question on the fund side is, so I understand that the three-year kind of rolling average of the property tax gives us a lag on any fund, on any sort of fund balances, and it actually smoothes out some of the volatility. Do we have anything that's sort of counter cyclical in our fund balance that we would potentially see kind of come in and offset any losses in the property tax revenues if they were to come down the road?
Not of any major substance. We have fees and charges, obviously, but they're a minor part of the budget. Interest revenue is up this year because rates were up in the first couple quarters. That could happen again. If there's inflation, we could see interest rates rise, but that could also cost us more than it benefits us. Not really. Nothing that springs immediately to mind.
Yeah, that might be something that we need to think about a little bit more down the road. If we were to continue to have any kind of downturn, what other sort of counter cyclical revenue streams we might be able to establish? Not quite like a head, but essentially that kind of an idea. Because if we were to see a big downturn, it would be good to have some things kick in and kind of help smooth that out later on. And I don't know what the answer would be necessarily, but let's maybe give it some thought and kind of kick around the idea.
It'd be interesting having that discussion as to what those might be, because typically, the revenue streams available to us that I can think of sitting here right at the moment are not counter cyclical.
Yeah.
Feet obviously, 88% of it's property tax, so that is what it is.
Thank you.
The rest being interest and fees and charges in minor amounts. But that's an interesting, interesting thing to have a discussion about.
Okay. Yeah, we can talk about it later on then.
Sure.
No other questions then? Thank you.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Geraldo?
You're welcome.
Questions, Madam Chair?
Thank you so much. And this was just a briefing. So, Mr. Zimmerman, we thank you and take care. We have, we have no minutes before we start our development review items. So we have concluded our administrative items for the day, and I'll proceed with our opening remarks and comments, and then we'll go proceed with our agenda. So for those of you who are joining for development review, good morning. I'm Elizabeth Hewlett, and I chair the Prince George's County Planning Board. With us today are the planning board members. Madam Vice Chair?
Here.
Okay. Commissioner Washington?
Present.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Present.
Commissioner Dornar?
Present.
And I am here in the, in our hearing room in reality, and I am accompanied by Kenny Flanagan, who is working the slides, the power. who is working the slides, the powerpoints, our planning director, Andre Checkley, our technical hearing writer, Marie Proctor, and other folks in and out. So we are socially distanced and masked up. So the planning board is now in session for our Thursday, May 28, 2020 meeting. And in an abundance of caution resulting from the global COVID-19 pandemic, this is the planning board's 10th virtual meeting. Two and a half months now utilizing online, phone, and video capabilities. During these challenging and unprecedented times, the Commission remains steadfastly committed to promoting a safe and healthy environment for our public, our applicants, our stakeholders, and our staff, all the while continuing to propel Prince George's County forward. I'd like to take a moment to remind everyone of the participation guidelines for our hearings. Speaker pre-registration and pre-submission of comments and exhibits must be submitted or registered by 10:00 a.m. on the Wednesday before the planning board meeting, as shown on the screen. Registered speakers and presenters connecting through a computer, tablet, or smartphone can also join the meeting with the link provided via email from the planning board. Online participants may be prompted to install GoToMeeting software in order to participate in the process. To listen or participate in the meeting using a phone line, participants may dial the call-in number provided by the email. I ask that all participants mute their phones when not speaking, and please do not put your phone on hold. If you want to watch the meetings live or register as a person of record, you may do so in accordance with the information presently displayed on the screen. We thank you and appreciate your flexibility, cooperation, and support as we continue to keep our planning functions moving forward in a safe fashion during our new normal. We ask that you make every effort to stay safe. As always, we commence our hearings with a moment of silence, and we'd like to take a moment to recognize the 48,423 current victims of the coronavirus and the 2,392 deaths in the state of Maryland. We have 14,627 confirmed cases in Prince George's County alone, 478 deaths. These are real, live human beings. They're often touted as statistics, but these are people's parents, their spouses, their children, or someone in someone's family or neighborhood, their loved ones. So we have to remember them as human beings. We also want to recognize and remember Shanti Mack, age 44, who was a 20-year employee of the Prince George's County Health Department. It's the only job she ever had in her whole life, and she passed away from this. Also, Lillian Kimura, age 91, who was a civil rights leader and was the first woman to serve as president of the Japanese-American Citizens League, also died of COVID. Playwright and AIDS activist Larry Kramer, who passed away from COVID. We want to remember the victims of the airline crash in Pakistan on 5/22. George Floyd, the African-American man who died on Monday after being handcuffed and pinned to the ground by a police officer's knee in Minneapolis. We want to remember him and his family, and I'm going to stop my comments there. Odessa Shannon, age 91, trailblazing leader, activist, and public servant, who was the first African-American woman elected to the Montgomery County Board of Education. Jerry Sloan, former NBA player for the Chicago Bulls and the coach of the Utah Jazz for 23 seasons. Eddie Sutton, age 84, legendary college basketball coach who won more than 800 games, and he was the first coach to take four different schools to the NCAA men's basketball tournament. Jimmy Cobb, age 91, fantastic drummer and last surviving member of Miles Davis, first greatest sex death. Richard Hurd, actor known for his roles in All the President's Men Get Out in Seinfeld. Bucky Baxter, age 65, guitarist, famed guitarist who performed with Bob Dylan. There may be others of which I am unaware. If you have suffered a loss in your family, please know that we hold you close to our hearts, and may we have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. We are closing out the month of May. We are closing out Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, also Haitian Heritage Month, Jewish American Heritage Month, Military Appreciation Month, National Fitness Month. I need to get with the program. The National Bike Month, Family Wellness Month, and, near and dear to my heart, Older Americans Month. But it's also a month where we need to remain aware of several things. It is lupus awareness month, ALS awareness month, national allergy and asthma awareness month, homeschooling awareness month, and I assure you that more people are aware of homeschooling than ever before. It is mental health month, and that is so critical now amidst the fear and horrific illness, loss of lives, isolation, loss of jobs, food insecurity, and sequestered families that have come about as a result of the devastating COVID-19 pandemic. So I do want to tell you that you can call, if you have any difficulty, you can call 211 in Prince George's County should you need any kind of counseling, because it really is taking its toll on a number of people. Thank you. It is May 28, and I will say on this day, May 28, in 1774, the First Continental Congress convened in Virginia. But in 1830, I want to tell you a story. Sadly, U.S. President Andrew Jackson signed the Indian Removal Act authorizing the Army to force by gunpoint Cherokee, Chickasaw, Choctaw Creek, and Seminole Indians out of their ancestral lands in Georgia and the surrounding states, setting the stage for what became known as the Trail of Tears. The Cherokees of Georgia tried to resist legally. They even took their case to the United States Supreme Court and won. However, the president refused to comply with the Supreme Court ruling. Fancy that. So over time, at least 60,000 Native Americans were marched west at gunpoint, and over 4,000 died on the treacherous trail to get them out of the South, because the South had what was known as ideal land for growing cotton, which led to a whole nother problem. So hence, the 5,043-mile trail through the nine states became known as the Trail of Tears due to the 4,000-plus persons who died on the trail. So just wanted to remember that Trail of Tears, because that's when, today, on this day, in 1830, that's when President Andrew Jackson signed that order for the Indian Removal Act. In 1892, the Sierra Club was founded for the preservation of the environment. 1923, ladies, listen up, the U.S. Attorney General proclaimed that it was now legal for women to wear pants anywhere. 1957, the National League approved the Brooklyn Dodgers and the New York Giants, their move to the West Coast. Don't get me started. And after a 78-year run, the famed luxury passenger train, the Orient Express, made its last trip, and that was in 1961. And finally, in 1972, the White House Plumbers, the plumbers, the covert special investigations unit created during the Nixon administration originally to plug up leaks of classified information, they made their first break-in to the DNC headquarters at the Border Gate Building on this day in 1972. Again, we want to go to census. It's imperative that everyone complete their census, spread the word, do what you got to do. Please get those numbers up in Prince George's County. As of yesterday, in Prince George's County, the response rate was 61.7%. We are inching up, but I mean, we are inching, inching, inching. I like to do a dash, a sprint. So encourage your friends and neighbors to complete the census by going to my2020census.gov, or they can call 844-330-2020, 844-330-2020. Again, the Department of Parks and Recreation Grab and Grow Program is still underway. They provide lunches for individuals and families five days a week, Monday through Friday, 12 to 2 p.m. at three distribution sites, Marlow Heights Community Center, Oak Crest Community Center, and Gladden Community Center. And on Friday, they also provide recreation and leisure materials for kids aged 5 to 18, such as jump ropes and art kits and whatnot. And finally, we want to take a moment to acknowledge, you know, during this virtual hearing, all of our staff aren't present. We have our key folks here, but there's a young man, planner, who stepped up to the plate. His name is Kenny Flanagan, and he is here working these powerpoints each and every week virtually, and it is, we are going to acknowledge his birthday. And he is a senior planning technician, and his birthday is this upcoming week. So can everyone say happy birthday, Kenny? Happy birthday, Kenny! Thank you.
Happy birthday, Kenny!
There we go. And so we ask that you, we ask that, we thank you, and we wish Kenny a happy birthday. And we ask each and every one of you who is watching, who is participating in this virtual hearing or who is watching the streaming, that you stay safe, that you look out for one another, that you stay strong and resilient, and remain ever hopeful as we strive to get through this crisis together. Thank you. First order of business is the consent agenda. Items 4A and 4B, we have the draft resolutions, and item 4D, we have final plats. Is there, I think we have Sherri Connor here, and Jill Kosak, and Tom Severs. I don't, if they can just indicate their presence, that would be great, but I don't think, I have no indication that there are any changes. And not hearing any, I'm going to see if there's a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, approve 4A, 4B, and 4D, items on the consent agenda, and the court is with recommendation of staff.
Second, Commissioner Washington?
Madam Vice Chair made the motion, Commissioner Washington second. Madam Vice Chair?
But I.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye.
Commissioner Dooner?
Aye.
Thank you. The ayes have it 5-0. Thank you. Okay, we're going to proceed in this order. First, we're going to start with items 10 and 11, followed by 5 and 6. So as a matter of fact, it's 10, 11, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9. So item 10 is a supplemental item. It is a draft resolution for Prince George's County Planning Board number 2020-88 for detailed site plan 2004 Riverfront. Mr. Halbert or Mr. Haller, are you both present?
I'm present, Madam Chair.
Okay. That's Mr. Haller. I don't see you yet, but okay. Mr. Halbert? Okay.
Madam Chair, this is Jill Kosak. He isn't present. I'm here today.
Okay, thank you.
This is a resolution for the case, the ETOD case that was heard last week.
Okay, just want to make sure there's no changes right there. Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
Move approval, Madam Chair. Commissioner Washington?
Second?
We have a motion by Commissioner Washington, seconded by Vice Chair Bailey. Vice Chair Bailey?
But aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Dooner?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. The ayes have it 5-0. Item 11 is the draft resolution for the detailed site plan 19020 Landy property for the Umbrella Architecture. Mr. Zhang, are you on? Or is it Ms. Kosak?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Yes, this is a fact, the planning board decision on this case.
Thank you.
Recommend approval, there's no changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hatcher, are you on? Just making sure.
I am on, but we have no changes.
Okay, thank you. That concludes the sign-up list. Is there a motion?
Move approval, Madam Chair.
Motion by...
Second, Commissioner Geraldo.
Motion by Vice Chair Bailey, and seconded by Commissioner Geraldo. Madam Vice Chair?
But aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye.
Commissioner Dooner?
Aye.
The ayes have it 5-0. Thank you. Next item is item 5, which is a special permit 190001 McDonald's Riverdale. Let's make sure we have all the parties who are signed up for this one. Mr. Diaz Campbell, are you here? Ms. Connor? Mr. Hatcher? Nicholas Beach? Jennifer Hauser? Crystal Saunders Hancock?
I'm present.
Noel Smith?
Present.
Thank you. Okay, so Mr. Diaz Campbell, you are on.
All right. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. For the record, I'm Eddie Diaz Campbell, Senior Planner with the Subdivision in Zoning Section. Item number 5 on the agenda is a special permit application for a McDonald's restaurant located at 6228 Baltimore Avenue in Riverdale Park. The subject project proposes to add two additions to the building totaling 311 square feet, to renovate the building facades, add new signage, and modify the drive-through and parking lot. The site is subject to the design standards of the Riverdale Park MUTC plan, and the special permit application is submitted to request approval of four departures from the plan's design standards. The four requested departures are: A, to allow less than 60% transparency on the street-facing facades; B, to allow the building additions to occupy less than 50% of the net lot area; C, to allow the new additions to occupy less than 66% of the Build 2 line; and D, to allow the building additions to be one-story instead of two. As a matter of housekeeping, staff has received one item of additional backup, a letter of support for the application from the Town of Riverdale Park, but no recommended conditions. Staff also notes that the special permit application is submitted concurrently with a revision of special exception site plan for the project, ROSP-4311-02. This ROSP is being processed separately for planning director review and approval. Slide 2, please. The site is located in the northwestern part of Prince George's County, within Planning Area 68 and Council District 3. Slide 3, please. More specifically, the site is located in the southwest quadrant of the intersection of Maryland 410 and US-1. Slide 4, please. The subject site is located in the mixed-use town center, or MUTC zone. To the north of the site is Maryland 410, with single-family detached dwelling units and the one-family detached residential, or R55 zone beyond. To the northeast is the intersection of Maryland 410 and US-1, with an office in the MUTC zone beyond. To the east is US-1, with commercial uses in the MUTC zone beyond. To the south are another office and its parking lot, also the MUTC zone. And finally, to the west is an alley with a bank in the MUTC zone beyond. Slide 5, please. The aerial photograph shows the existing site layout as well as the surrounding uses. Slide 6, please. The site map shows that the topography on the site is generally flat. The site is mostly covered by impertinent surfaces. Slide 7, please. The master planned right-of-way map shows Maryland 410, an arterial roadway, and US-1, a collector roadway. No right-of-way dedication is required with this type of application, and no right-of-way dedication is proposed. Slide 8, please. This bird's eye view shows an up近see of the existing site layout. Parking area to the right of the building in this photo and the drive-through behind it are the focus of the site design changes. Slide 9, please. The site plan shows the site boundary in red and the two building additions in blue. The two additions total 311 square feet of floor area. Based on the size of the additions, the site is not subject to full compliance with the Riverdale Park MUTC plan. Rather, only the additions themselves and the specific portions of the site being modified are subject to full compliance. Because the additions cannot meet full compliance, the applicant is requesting departures through the special permit plan. Section 27-548.00.01a2 of the ZOE ordinance gives the specific criteria this project was needed in order to qualify for departures for the MUTC plan. These are examined in detail in the staff report. The staff is recommending approval of all four departures, subject to conditions. In general, staff found that requiring strict compliance with the four design standards needing departures would be an undue hardship for the owner of the property, as the building would have to be demolished and rebuilt in order for it to be able to meet the standards for height, minimum block coverage, wall placement, and window placement. This would far exceed the scope of the renovation the applicant proposes. Though the whole building is not subject to these design standards at this time, the additions cannot meet them on their own. Slide 10, please. The next two slides show the proposed elevations of the building, with the building addition areas pointed out. This slide shows the facade facing north towards Maryland 410 on top and the facade facing south on the bottom. Slide 11, please. This slide shows the facade facing west on top and the facade facing east towards US-1 on the bottom. According to the applicant, there are fewer windows supposed on the southeast and west sides of the building because of the existing kitchen facilities which are at the rear. Slide 12, please. The next seven slides show renderings of the building. Staff will note that the building's signage appearance is not necessarily file and can be modified... be modified based on the conditions of the special permit, or the related revision of Special Exception Site Plan. This rendering shows the north and west sides. Slide 13, please. This rendering shows the north side. Slide 14, please. This one shows the east side. Slide 15. And this one shows the west side. Slide 16. This one shows an aerial view from the northwest. Slide 17. This one shows an aerial view from the southeast. Slide 18. Finally, this one shows a street-level view from the northeast. In conclusion, the Subdivision in Zoning staff recommends that the planning board adopt the findings and approve SP-190001, including the four requested departures, subject to conditions contained in the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz Campbell. Are there any questions? Madam Vice Chair?
No questions.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Commissioner Duonner?
Yeah, so, I'm familiar with this site. It's not far from where I live, and, um, it's, it's always busy. There's always cars coming in and out, but one of the things that's always concerned me when I go into park and go into there or anything is, is completely car-centric. There's, it, there's cars, 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 and there's no sort of pedestrian friendliness on this site. And this particular locale, I mean, that street isn't necessarily pedestrian friendly and healthy, but there, there could at least be some markings in this parking lot on the pavement to call to attention the drivers coming into the site, um, the people who are going to be walking. I know that there's a crosswalk on, um, I think like the west side of, of the lot, but the cars go circling around this building and aren't necessarily looking for pedestrians coming around, and having a little bit of additional markings on, on the pavement would be good. I know it's not a ton of distance around here, but cars just zoom off sometimes, um, and, and I think a little bit more thought needs to go into how you, you have a slightly safer environment around here.
Okay, so maybe we can, um, uh, maybe Mr. Hatcher can respond to that. Um, okay, was that it for you?
Sir, I, I, we can leave it to them, or to the applicant to discuss that, but I'm looking for additional crosswalks or something to provide a little bit more safety in here for people who are going to cross in front of these cars that, that don't necessarily even watch for people as they, they pull off.
Okay, Mr. Diaz, um, Campbell, do you want to take a stab? I real, I think, I think it probably lies in the purview of the applicant, though, to respond, if that's okay.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, but I think it's also the responsibility of our staff to bring up these items ahead of time, um, with like crosswalks and different things. Like, we should, we should be thinking about this as we're redesigning sites, because you, you don't see any on, on the slides, and on the existing site, there really isn't any either. So, I think we also need to push applicants a little bit also to, to be safe as well.
Okay.
So, um, this is Eddie Diaz Campbell. What I'd say to that is, um, we have a, a revision of Special Exception Site Plan that's also pending for, uh, for this, uh, for this property. I think asking the applicant to provide more, more sidewalks is reasonable, and we could potentially ask them to do that as a part of this plan, or part of that plan. This special permit plan is specifically submitted for the requested departures, and, um, they didn't request a departure for, uh, for providing, uh, crosswalks, or not providing crosswalks.
Yeah, no, I understand they didn't request that, but they're building more onto this building, and they're, they're improving parts of this that encourage cars to be zooming around in this, in this parking lot. Even if they don't request that, I think we should be pushing people for, for safety, because that's one of our responsibilities that, even if the applicant isn't asking for departure from that, it doesn't mean that we shouldn't be considering it.
Um, so certainly it is something that we can, can ask for. Um, I would ask Chris Hatcher if it's something that, uh, the applicant would agree to provide.
Well, that's what I'm going to say. Hold on, Mr. Hatcher. I'm not, we're not getting to you yet, because right now, you haven't even presented yet. So, right now, the questions that we're asking are of Mr. Diaz Campbell. And, and so, um, when we get to you, I, you could start off by answering that question, because I want to see that, we also have other board members who have not had a chance to ask that question to Mr. Diaz Campbell. So, when we get to you, I hope that you can respond to that. Okay?
Yeah, and this is all of our discussion for staff. Something that I've been looking for in terms of response that would, I think, be actually addressing my concerns, if you're looking at the slide that you have up right now, there's, there's a light post in the top right, that's at like the, the north section of the, um, the, of the lot right there. Yeah, there's, there's sort of an off-colored brick, um, right there. That could actually be a crosswalk, across the parking lot right there into the front entrance of the building. That's not there right now, um, and that's not there in, in the site rendering either. So, any of these cars that are parked alongside Route 1 right there, you have to just kind of walk in front of the, the cars that are there and have to wait and hope that they actually see you. And sometimes they're pulling away from the drive-through window, knowing books, and they just pull right through because they're looking out of their food or their drinks, and they, I, I've almost been hit right there. Having a crosswalk right there to draw attention to people's eyes, I think is perfectly reasonable with an application like this, even if it's not exactly what they're asking for. They're asking to bring the building out a little bit more, make improvements to the site. Us to ask for improved pedestrian safety is perfectly within our, our purview for something like this. So, I would suggest like a crosswalk right there, and thinking about other places where we can increase pedestrian safety or visibility as well.
So, um, the, Mr. Hatcher, will you address that, and see if this, if this special permit is the, is the application for that, or, or the fa, the next application?
The SE.
The DS, the detailed site plan, that's what I'm trying to get at. Excuse me?
The SE.
Oh, the spe, oh, the special exception, okay. Um, okay, so, um, so, what, Mr. Hatcher, you can address that. Was that it for you, Commissioner Duonner?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Geraldo?
I have no questions, but I share the concerns raised by Commissioner Duonner, uh, given the location. That's all.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Washington, did I call you already? I think I did.
You did. I have no question.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, so now, um, I, I had one question. Going back to these slides, on slides 12, 13, 14, and 15, which one of those is facing Baltimore Avenue? 13? Slide 13? Okay, and which one is facing?
So, that, that one that you're looking at right now, that's the front of the store that faces East West Highway. Where the car is, that's the one that's facing Baltimore Avenue or Route 1.
Oh, okay. Thank you. So, okay, so, so this is not, this is the one that's actually facing East West Highway, okay? And then, then 14 is the one, 14 is the one that's facing East West Highway? Yeah.
Well, that's the one that's, that's facing Baltimore Avenue.
Yeah, that's the one that's facing Baltimore Avenue right there.
Okay, got it. Okay. Oh, okay, got it. Thank you. Okay. Um, all right, so if there are no more questions of Mr. Diaz Campbell, Mr. Hatcher, you're on. And you see you have a question on the table. Oh, and by the way, I made, I, excuse me, before that, I, I need to make sure that, um, Mr. Diaz Campbell referenced it, but we do have a letter in, that has been submitted from the Town of Riverdale Park, Maryland, is in support. Um, I do want to, um, I do want to, just, just for purposes of reference, it's, we're just going to call exhibit, city exhibit number one, but it's already in the record. Okay, thank you. Mr. Hatcher?
Uh, for the record, my name is Chris Hatcher with the Law Firm, Lurch, Lurcherly and Brewery, and I have the applicant. To directly address the questions, uh, that some of the commissioners have, uh, some of the improvements that we are making to the site are intentionally intended to make the, uh, the pedestrian experience a lot more safer, uh, going to and from the site, but do, uh, the applicant is, uh, definitely sympathetic to the experience that you guys are having, so, uh, we, we will definitely are, are open to, uh, more, um, markings on the pavement or on the site, just to ensure some additional pedestrian, uh, safety going to and from, um, the sidewalks to, uh, to the actual site. So, that's definitely something that we can, uh, work with staff on during the course of the ROSP application, that is currently before, uh, the planning board, uh, planning director.
Okay.
Uh, we definitely want to thank, uh, staff and the MUTC Committee, as well as Town of Riverdale Park. We've met with, uh, the MUTC Committee numerous times, both in person and virtually, once, um, the situations have changed, and worked, uh, collaboratively with them to try to come up with a solution that everybody can live with on the site, uh, which is reflected in the, the Town of Riverdale Park, uh, letter of support. With that, we are definitely here to respond to any questions you have, um, but the applicant respectfully requests that the planning board adopt the findings, the fact, conclusions of law contained in the staff report, and approve SP-190001, um, with the proposed conditions. Um, I know that we've already addressed, uh, addressed one of the questions, but we're definitely open to address any other questions, madam.
Okay, so let me see if there are any questions, and before I do that, I want to make sure that, so, Mr. Speech and Ms. Hauser are here, are with you, if, for questions only, or do, or do you plan to present them to testify?
Um, for, to, to respond to any questions at the point.
Okay, thank you. And then, we also have Ms. Hancock and Noel Smith on, on the line too, and may, maybe they can be of some assistance with, um, Commissioner Duonner's request as well. Um, so let's first see if there's any questions of you, Mr. Hatcher. Uh, Madam Vice Chair?
No questions.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Commissioner Duonner?
So, I, I just want to know a little bit more about what's going to be done on the pedestrian side. I mean, it's good to, to say you'll work together with the planning director and do that, but, um, maybe, I don't know yet, but, and maybe it's, it's reserved for another part of the case, but I just want to make sure that, that does get addressed. Um, and then, sort of a, a different concern that, that I have, I, I think that Madam Chair was perhaps alluding to it in some of her earlier questions, the, the site that's facing Baltimore Avenue, um, is not very visually like attractive necessarily. Um, the side that fa, the side that faces East West Highway has windows and stuff like that, but in this rendering, right here that we're looking at on slide 14, um, there's really just not much to it. So, I was wondering if you could incorporate something that, I realize this is a franchise, um, office, and you're, you're upgrading an existing building that's pretty old, that hasn't been upgraded in a while, but could you put maybe some artwork or something in there? Because that's been kind of the theme along Route 1 in this area, is, is art and local artistry, or kind of visual differences. So, I don't know if you could do that on, particularly on that just large stretch of the side of the building that's just basically blank, um, right there.
Did we say that's the kitchen area?
Yeah, that's, that's kind of the kitchen area there. The front, to the, the right, that's closer to East West Highway is where you have seating and stuff, so that's like all kitchen, so they probably wouldn't want to put like windows or anything like that.
Okay. Mr. Hatcher?
Uh, that was definitely one of the issues that came up during the MUTC Committee, and I think we can continue, uh, and Town of Riverdale Park, I think we can continue to explore what type of things we can do with that wall. Oh, just, just that, that the board is aware, um, they, they did request some, uh, some, some changes in the, the architectural finishes, which is what you're sort, what you're seeing in, in the, in, in the illustrative that's before you. Um, it's, uh, I know Nick is on the line, and I'm, I just have a quick question for Nick from Bowler. It's my understanding that there may be some landscaping that, uh, along that wall as well. Is that accurate, Nick?
Uh, there's landscaping between the road and the parking. It's not necessarily right up against that wall.
Okay.
Yeah, you can see that.
So, I think, I, I think, yeah.
Mr. Hatcher, you should think about something else that actually makes this, I mean, if you're going to go into the site and revamp it, and this is your first time in, in years in doing this for the client, you guys need to think about what else is happening along Route 1. You've got the Whole Foods area right up to the top, and the 7-Eleven that is, are brand-new just up the street, and then down below that, you've got all the kind of downtownish, um, Arts District area. All, all of those kind of features have nice visual appeals. This site does not. Um, and it's crossing like, some nice kind of brickwork and, and other buildings across the street, and restaurants and stuff, that could get foot traffic over to this site. Um, so I, I would encourage you to have like a painting or something on the side of the building, or think about a, a statue or something else, like around in this area that would be more visually appealing, um, and, and encouraging for, to kind of make it fit in a little bit more into the, the growing area.
Uh, definitely understood. That is definitely something we'll consider, yeah, as part of the ROSP application.
Yeah, because if you were to do this today, and bring this back here, I don't think this would get approved as is. Like, based upon, this is a brand-new development, those would be the things you'd be asked to do, for sure, by our staff. So, to the extent that you can incorporate them now, your, your revamping this project would be great.
Uh, yes, sir, Commissioner.
Um, also, I wanted to mention, um, with regard to, um, it's, it's the ROSP revision of the, um, site plan, which will be going to, um, the, the planning director. She is here and present in the room, so she's hearing the entire discussion. So, I don't think it's something that will, um, will slide by, um, Commissioner Duonner, because we, you know, the applicant is hearing you loud and clear, and, um, the, the planning director is here, and, um, and so, uh, as they submit that, I think that part can be addressed. Okay. And, um, and I know you, I, I know you've mentioned it's, you know, artwork or something to that effect there. I mean, that would be nice, so, but I don't know that we can exact it, but it would be nice if it were. Profited. Okay. Um, were there any other questions? Did you have any other questions, Commissioner Duonner?
So, I mean, you, you hinted at it. I, I would ask Mr. Hatcher if he'd be willing to proffer something like that, either on the side of the building, or sort of a sculpture around there. I think that would make this, this site much more attractive, and actually make it fit in a little bit better with the surrounding, um, parks in the area.
Uh, I mean, at, at this point, we can't necessarily proffer artwork. I think there, there is an entire internal process, uh, that, from a corporate level, McDonald's has to go through to put stuff like that up on a, on a side, but what we can, um, what we can do is, we definitely understand the comments that are, that are coming from the board, and the idea that, uh, this, this particular stretch along Baltimore Avenue, uh, needs to be more visually stimulating, uh, particularly to anybody who's driving around the building, or, but more specifically to any pedestrians who might be across the street at the Wells Fargo, or walking down Baltimore Avenue towards the Art District, or up towards the, the, the Whole Foods.
And it's, it's consistent with the evolution.
If you would proffer to put it on the site, in, around, like where you've got some of the landscaping and stuff, you could have sculptures, or, or other things that would get at the same kind of, of an idea.
So, let me just say this. I think, um, I want to make sure we're, um, careful, because we can't exactly ask them to proffer, because then it's no longer a proffer, but what we can do, what we can do is ask them to consider, um, and I think that what I heard Mr. Hatcher say is, there's this whole big internal process that they have to go through, and, but in, as you go through that process, you could explore it if you so chose.
Absolutely, Madam Chair.
Okay. So, so, I take that absolutely to, to, um, indicate that we could put that in as a, as a finding? That you would explore it?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Um, Commissioner, was that it for you, Commissioner Duonner?
Yeah, that makes me feel a little bit better about it. Thank you.
Okay. But not a whole lot. Okay. Commissioner, Commissioner Geraldo?
Uh, I have no questions. I just want to thank the applicant for agreeing to put it in a finding, and I'm sure McDonald's would want to be a good neighbor to the rest of the neighborhood.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. That concludes the questions. Okay. So I don't think we had anyone else signed up to speak. We do have the letter of support from Riverdale Park, but no one signed up. So was there anything that you needed to add? Mr. Hatcher?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Washington, and I move that we adopt the findings of staff, as well as the proffered finding by the applicant to explore, and I would ask staff to come up with an appropriate way to characterize this, but explore visually stimulating elements on the side of the building facing Baltimore Avenue. And as such, approve SP-190001, along with the associated condition as outlined in staff's report.
Commissioner Geraldo, second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I should have mentioned this earlier, but we do have our attorneys present, virtually. Peter Goldsmith is our senior counsel, who is the lead attorney for the day, and David Warner, who's our principal counsel. You're both present, right?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair. This is Peter.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Okay, so both are present, thank you. And I figured I'd better jump in on that proffer thing before you all did. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, so next, we're going to go to Item 6. Item 6 is conceptual site plan 19010 for LIW Ironworks. And let me make sure we have all the people who are signed up for this one. I'm going to start with Henry Zhang.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair. Present here.
Good morning, Ms. Kosak.
Present, Madam Chair.
Okay, Chuck Schneider?
Present.
And Tom Masok?
Present.
Noel Smith?
Present.
Okay, and then we also have an exhibit. It's the Indian Head Highway Area Action Council, Inc., letter, and that basically provides conditional support. They raise some issues, but they provide conditional support. So we'll just call that IHHAAC Exhibit 1. Okay. All right, Mr. Zhang, you're on.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, Madam Chair, and members of the planning board. For the record, this is Henry Zhang with Urban Design Section. Item 6, in front of you, is a conceptual site plan for LIW Ironworks. Slide 2, please. The site is in Plan Areas 80, Council District 8. Slide 3, please. Specifically, the site is located on the north side of Cornet Street, and approximately 475 feet east of its intersection with Livingston Road. Slide 4, please. The site is in I-3 Zone. It's retained in I-3 Zone by 2006, approved master plan and sectional map amendment for the Hudson Creek and South Potomac Planning Area. To the north of the site is a daycare center in I-3 Zone, and then to the west of the site is a warehouse use in I-3 Zone. And to the northeast corner of the side is a auto repair use in the I-1 Zone. Next slide, please. This is the aerial photo shows the site basically is vacant, with all those developed properties surrounded on three sides. Next, Slide 6, please. This is a site map show the site is generally leveled, and then with the frontage on the Indian Head Highway and also Corner Street. Next slide, please. Slide 7, please. This slide shows master plan right-of-way, and then which indicated that Indian Head Highway is a freeway, and Livingston Road is a collector roadway. The subject site is outlined in blue, it's an L-shaped site. Slide 8, please. This is bird's-eye view of the site. You see the corner of the Corner Street and Indian Head Highway. This is the repair facility. And then to the right-hand of the side is a daycare center. Across the street of Corner Street is the warehouse facility. Slide 9, please. This is the conceptual site plan show very briefly where is the site and the possible access. Two access points possibly will be providing access to this site is from the service road of Indian Head Highway and also Corner Street. Slide 10, please. This is the illustrative plan show possible building location, and also the site improvement included parking on both east and the south side of the building. This site has been reviewed for conformance with the zoning requirements, specifically Section 27, 471, and then 473. This site is also subject to Woodland Wildlife Habitat Conservation Ordinance. There is a TCP-1 submitted, has been reviewed for conformance with all the requirements. The site is also subject to other site-related regulations, such as landscape manual and tree canopy coverage ordinance. However, given the nature of this review, conformance with those regulations will be reviewed for conformance at the time of detailed site plan. There is no agency opposed to this approval. As Chairman mentioned earlier, Indian Head Highway Area Action Council provided a letter of support with some concerns, which included noise and issues will be taken care at the later stage of review. Staff would like to correct that typo on page number four, which the staff report messed up the number of the Indian Head Highway, which should be MD-210 instead of MD-201, as stated currently on page four of the staff report. With that, Urban Design Section recommend approval, excuse me, recommend the planning board approve the CSP, CSP-19010, and Type 1 tree conservation plan, TCP-1-008-2020, subject to one condition, which consisting of two subconditions, as stated on staff report on page 829. This concludes the staff presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zhang. We have no applicant signed up on this, so I'm going to see if...Mr. Schneider, are you here just if there are questions?
Yes, I'm here for any questions.
Okay, same with you, Mr. Masok and Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Let's see if the board has any questions of Mr. Zhang. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Commissioner Donner?
No questions.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Just have one question. What is the proximity of this site to the daycare center?
It's basically, for the record, this is Henry Zhang with Urban Design Section. Mr. Geraldo, it's just right adjacent to the site, to the north of the...north is the daycare center. This site is south of the daycare center.
So is it in between the dealership and Fort Washington Road? Is that it?
If you look at the Slide number 8, which is the bird's-eye view, and then the subject site is outlined in purple, and then to your right, you see a top of the building and some parking, that's basically the daycare center.
Okay. Okay, no further questions? Thank you, Mr. Schneider.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider.
Okay. Thank you. So no other questions, right? Okay, so at this point, we all entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Washington, and I move that we adopt the findings of staff in addition to the correction as noted by Mr. Zhang on page four, and approve CSP-19010 and TCP-1-008-2020, along with the associated condition as outlined in staff's report.
Okay.
Second, Madam Chair.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Washington, second by Vice Chair Bailey. Vice Chair Bailey?
Aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Donner?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it, 5-0. Thank you. Okay. We're going to go now to Item 7, and after Item 7, we're probably going to take maybe a five-minute break, five to 10-minute break before we go to Item 8, a health break. Okay. So Item 7 is detailed site plan 18055, Ardwick-Ardmore Consolidated Self-Storage. Let's make sure we have all the parties present. Andrew Bishop? Okay, Ms. Kosak?
Present.
Howler, Mr. Howler?
Good morning, Madam Chair. I'm present.
Okay, thank you. Chuck Schneider?
Present.
Ben Ryan?
Present.
Sarah Grant? Rebecca Brown?
Present.
Mike Wiles?
Present.
And that concludes the sign-up list. What we do have is an exhibit, which we will label applicant's exhibit number one. It is the applicant's proposed revisions to the conditions. Okay. Mr. Bishop, you're on.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the planning board. For the record, Andrew Bishop with the Urban Design Section. Item 7 is DSP-18055, which proposes to construct a three-story 1,051 unit consolidated storage facility on Parcels A and D. Please note the applicant has submitted additional information in his proposing revised conditions and revised finding language. This information was submitted before the 10:00 a.m. deadline and is included in your backup for the application. Slide 2, please. The site is in Planning Area 72, Council District 5. Slide 3, please. The property is located on the south side of Ardwick-Ardmore Road, approximately 280 feet west of Preston Drive, and is outlined here on this slide in red. Slide 4, please. The site is in the I-1 Zone, and it is within a fully-developed industrial area. The site is bounded to the north by Ardwick-Ardmore Road and to the southeast, west, and west by industrial uses in the I-1 Zone. Slide 4, please. This aerial shows the existing developed site outlined here in red. Slide 6, please. As seen in the aerial photo, the site is currently developed and is relatively flat. Please note that there are no environmental features on the property. Slide 7, please. This slide shows the master plan right-of-way in the vicinity of the property, which include the industrial roadway of Ardwick-Ardmore Drive abutting the site to the north. Slide 8, please. The aerial shows a bird's-eye view of the developed site with the existing building, which is proposed to be demolished on the eastern portion of the slide. Slide 9, please. This exhibit shows the detailed site plan submitted with the application, and shows this consolidated storage building with a one-way drive aisle circumventing the building and parking proposed adjacent to the building. A unique feature proposed with this application includes the circulation that is proposed on-site. This application is proposing a drive aisle that travels through the building and can be seen on the architectural slides towards the end of this presentation. Slide 10, please. This exhibit shows the landscape plan submitted with the application and meets the applicable requirements of the Landscape Manual. Slide 11, please. The architectural elevation shows the character of the proposed building and include windows, horizontal banding, color changes in accents of green meadow canopies to break up the longer expanses of the facade and create visual interest. The main entrance is shown on the north elevation and is accented by glass panels and an elevated roof line. The drive-through portion of the building is seen on the east and west elevations on the next slide. Slide 12, please. The drive-through portion of the building is seen here and proposes 16 feet of clearance with storage units proposed above the drive-through portion of the building, and include an 18-foot-wide travel lane with additional clear zones on either side to allow for safe passage. Slide 13, please. This slide shows the details of the proposed signage and the retaining wall proposed on the southern portion of the site. The signage includes green accents matching some of the materials used on the building, and staff is recommending approval. Slide 14, please. This exhibit shows additional details proposed on-site, such as the decorative fence along the frontage of the property, in addition to details for the gate and the keypad proposed. In conclusion, the Urban Design Section recommends the planning board adopt the findings of this report and approve detailed site plan DSP-18055 for Ardwick-Ardmore Consolidated Storage, subject to the findings and conditions found in the technical staff report and the applicant's proposed revisions, which have been reviewed by staff and are in agreement. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Let's see if there are any questions for you. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Commissioner Geraldo?
No questions, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Donner?
No questions.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Howler?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Tom Howler. I'm an attorney with offices in Largo, and I'm happy to be here today, presenting detailed site plan DSP-18055. The other parties who are online include Sarah Grant, who represents the property owner and developer, Mike Wiles with Joyce Engineering, and Rebecca Brown, who is with our architect, Butts Wilburn, and all of them are available to answer any questions that the board may have. As staff noted, this is a relatively simple site. It is an industrially-zoned property in the Ardwick-Ardmore Industrial Park. It is completely surrounded by other industrial development. The development on this property dates back almost 50 years, and the entire site is basically paved at this point in time. As you can imagine, the site in its existing condition was constructed prior to modern stormwater management techniques, and so the redevelopment of this older site will result in upgrading of environmental protections and the provision of current ESD requirements. The site conforms with all Landscape Manual requirements, all Green Area requirements, all the requirements applicable to the I-1 Zone, as well as all of the applicable requirements for the construction of consolidated storage that are set forth in the Prince George's County Code. We concur with the findings of staff and staff's recommendation, and we do have a few minor modifications to one finding and to three conditions that I am happy to review with the planning board at your discretion.
Okay, so, well, let's go through...they're minor, so let's go through the conditions, and then let's see if the board has any questions of anything, okay? Mr. Howler?
Sure. So, looking at applicant's exhibit number one, we propose a revision to finding five at the top of page five of the staff report. That finding, that revision to that finding relates to the removal of proposed condition number two. As staff notes in the staff report, the site consists of two lots of record, and the applicant indicated in the statement of justification that they were going to be combined and developed as a single record lot, which is what the code allows you to do. Staff understood that comment to mean that the applicant intended to replat the properties, which the applicant has the right to do but is not obligated to do. Condition two would require that the property be replatted prior to the issuance of a building permit, and the applicant is requesting that that be removed because the ability to replat is just optional, and staff agrees with that. Condition 1G, which we are proposing to modify, staff had asked for clarification of the height of the pass-through in the building, and the site plan indicated to be 15 feet, but in actuality, the height is going to be 16 feet. So we just are adding that language to clarify that the site and architectural plans will show the height as 16 feet. And then the revision to condition 1K, the parking schedule referenced a resident manager in the parking requirements, but in fact, there will not be a resident manager in this instance, and so we're... in this instance, and so we're adding a condition to just require that the parking schedule be revised to eliminate reference to the resident manager. The number of parking spaces will not change. There will just be a couple of extra parking spaces, but there will not be a resident manager on-site at this facility.
Okay, and then two?
And two is the condition that would require us to replat the property, which is only an optional requirement or an optional procedure.
Okay, got it.
So while my client may choose to do that in the future, they do not want that to be a condition that impacts the ability to pull building permits.
Okay.
So we're deleting all of two? We're deleting two?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Bishop, you indicate you're okay with these, you said, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay. Now, let's see if the board has any questions of you. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions.
Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Commissioner Donner?
No questions.
Commissioner Geraldo?
I have no questions, Madam Chair.
Okay, and all of your folks here signed up here are, if they're questions only, correct?
That is correct.
So then, if no one is itching to speak, we will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Washington, and I move that we adopt the findings of staff, and as further amended by applicant exhibit number one, and approve DSP-18055 along with the associated conditions as outlined in staff's report and as further amended by applicant exhibit number one.
This is Commissioner Geraldo, I second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second is their discussion. Hearing none, Madam Vice Chair?
Aye.
Commissioner Washington?
Aye.
Commissioner Geraldo?
Aye.
Commissioner Donner?
Aye.
The ayes have it, five-zero. We're gonna take a 10-minute health break, and we'll come back and hear items eight, followed by item nine. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Geraldo? Can you turn my mic off for a second? He had a problem signing on before. He couldn't get on this morning.
Maybe he's...
So maybe he's having a double? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, the Prince George's County Planning Board is back in session. I see all five commissioners, so we're good. We're going to proceed with item eight, which is the preliminary plan 4-17034, the preserve at Westphalia. Let's do a check to make sure we have everyone we need for this matter. Tom Severs?
Present.
Sherry Connor?
Present.
Okay, Matt Tedesco? Hold on a second, Matt. Let me make sure they sign.
Thank you, good morning, Madam Chair, I'm present. Thank you for unmuting me.
He's got two there. Okay, good morning. Mark Jubah?
Present.
Glenn Burton?
Present.
Noel Smith?
Present.
Helen Hassan?
Present.
Jennifer Stabler?
Present.
Alex Viegas? Okay, hold on. It may take a moment. There he is, okay. Okay, Alex Viegas, you there? Okay, he's unmuted? Al?
Madam Chair, this is Matt Tedesco. I know Nat Ballard is on as well. He may be pitching and filling in for Alex.
Okay, so I was gonna recall him next. Okay, thank you, Nat Ballard.
Present.
Okay. Jessica McMahon?
Present.
Did I get that right?
You did.
Okay, thank you. I keep asking that. Michael, Mike Lenhart?
Present.
Ryan Day?
Present.
Okay, Victor White?
Present.
Okay, so that concludes the sign-up list. I don't think I missed anybody. I would note that we do have one exhibit, which is the applicant's proposed revised conditions, which even though it's submitted timely, we were just gonna mark it for purposes of clarity, and it will be deemed applicant's exhibit number one. And with that, we can resume. Mr. Severs, you're on.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, and members of the board. For the record, I am Thomas Severs, Senior Planner with the Subdivision and Zoning Section. Item number eight on the agenda is the preliminary plan of subdivision for the preserve at Westphalia, 4-17034, including variance requests to sections 27-480D and 25...
You know, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. I was remiss. I do have these exhibits that I was supposed to recognize. One is the applicant's proposed revised conditions. The second is the preserve at Westphalia. Okay, hold on a second. Okay, so we have the proposed revised conditions, also the presentation from the community meeting, which we'll call applicant's exhibit B. The community meeting notice letter was applicant's exhibit C. The mailer, the nine pages of mailing labels, applicant's exhibit D, and the certificate of mailings, applicant's exhibit E. So we do have all of these. I just wanna make sure you know that. Okay, thank you. Sorry, Mr. Severs.
No problem. Thank you for clarifying that. So item number eight on the agenda is preliminary plan of subdivision for the preserve at Westphalia, 4-17034, including variance requests to sections 27-480D and 25-122B1G, as well as a variation request from section 24-128B7A. The subject project proposes 292 lots and 25 parcels for single-family detached and attached units, and approximately 12,500 square feet of commercial development. The applicant's representative, Matt Tedesco, has entered five exhibits into the record prior to the 10:00 a.m. deadline yesterday. Exhibit A details the proposed revised findings and conditions, which I will address at the end of this presentation. Slide two, please. The site is located in the central part of Prince George's County, within Planning Area 78 and Council District 6. Slide three, please. More specifically, the site is located in the northwest quadrant of the intersection of Westphalia Road and Ritchie Marlborough Road. Slide four, please. The subject site is located in the local activity center, LAC Zone, and residential medium, RM Zone, and is part of a larger property known as the villages at Westphalia. The site is bounded to the north by developed properties in the residential estates, RE and the RM Zones, to the west by the rest of the property of the villages at Westphalia in the RM and LAC Zones, to the south by the right-of-way of Westphalia Road with residential development in the RE and RM Zones beyond, and to the east by the right-of-way of Ritchie Marlborough Road with residential development in the RE Zone beyond. Slide five, please. The aerial photograph shows that the site is currently improved with a single-family detached home and associated farm outbuildings. As noted above, surrounding uses include single-family homes and farmland. Slide six, please. The site map shows the property boundary outlined in purple and varied topography with tributaries on-site that trend toward the north into the turkey ranch catchment area. Slide seven, please. The master plan right-of-way map shows the master planned arterial roadway Ritchie Marlborough Road abutting the site to the east and master planned collector roadway Westphalia Road abutting the site to the south. Slide eight, please. The five critical intersections determined to be impacted by the development are shown by the numbered yellow squares on this slide and are further described in detail in the staff report. Given the proposed development, it was found that four of the intersections will operate at an acceptable level of service and that the payment of fee towards the planned MB4 interchange, numbered as intersection four on this slide, will satisfy the transportation adequacy requirements for the site as outlined in the technical staff report. Slide nine, please. This slide shows the northern half of the preliminary plan of subdivision. The second half is continued next. It shows the property boundary, 292 lots and 25 parcels outlined in red. Public and private streets are highlighted in blue, and the PMA is highlighted in green. Adequate public facilities, including water, sewer, and police facilities, are available to serve the site. It is noted that fire and EMS fails the four-minute travel test for the commercial portion of the proposal and will require on-site mitigation as detailed on page 19 of the technical staff report. Slide 10, please. This slide shows the southern portion of the preliminary plan of subdivision. The applicant has requested a variation from section 24-128B7A of the subdivision regulations for the allowance of 137 lots that do not front on or have direct access to a public street. The applicable lots are highlighted in yellow. Staff recommends approval of this variation request as set forth on pages 14 to 17 of the technical staff report. The applicant has also requested a variance to section 27-480D of the zoning ordinance to allow 45% of the townhouse groupings to exceed six units and to allow three groupings of more than nine units. I would just like to point out right now as well that there was a later version marked up. This shows three groupings outlined in orange. This is the three groupings of 10 units. There are five other groupings of eight units that were to be outlined in green, and there were five other groupings of seven units that were to be outlined in pink. Staff recommends approval of this variance request as set forth on pages 37 to 41 of the technical staff report, and I apologize for the slide not being the updated version. Slide 11, please. This application is subject to the woodland and wildlife habitat conservation ordinance, and a TCP-1 has been filed with the application. The TCP shows the subject lots and parcels outlined in red, streets in dark blue, and the PMA is highlighted in light blue. Slide 12, please. The applicant submitted a variance request to section 25-122B1G of the woodland and wildlife habitat conservation ordinance. The variance request is to allow the removal of one specimen tree, highlighted in green, as outlined on pages 29 to 31 of the technical staff report. Staff recommends approval of the variance request for the removal of one specimen tree, ST14. Slide 13, please. The PMA impact exhibit shows five areas of disturbance proposed within NEPMA, which totals 28,972 square feet. Again, this slide was updated in a later version, and this is showing the previous version. These impacts are necessary for critical infrastructure improvements and grading tie-out. Staff recommends approval of the PMA impacts, which is detailed on pages 31 to 33 of the technical staff report. The subdivision and zoning staff recommends that the planning board adopt the findings and approve preliminary plan of subdivision, 4-17034, the preserve at Westphalia, TCP-1-002-2018-01, variance to sections 25-122B1G and 27-480D, and variation from section 24-128B7A, subject to the conditions contained in the staff report. Applicant's exhibit A presented revised findings and conditions that staff has reviewed, and we are in agreement with the changes. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Severs. Can you go back to slide 10, please? Mr. Flanagan? Okay. So, I just wanna make sure I heard you correctly. So, I know the three outlined in orange are sticks of 10, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and I saw somewhere in the conditions that none of them will be more than 10, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so now, so somehow many are nine?
Let's see. Five are, let me get to that portion of my presentation. There are five groupings of eight, and there are five groupings of seven.
Okay, so five, so no nines. So five groupings of eight, and how many did you say of seven? Five?
Yes, ma'am.
And then three of 10? Okay.
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. Let's see if there's any questions. Madam Vice Chair?
No questions. No questions.
Okay, Commissioner Washington?
No questions.
Commissioner Donner?
No questions.
Commissioner Geraldo?
No questions, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay. All right, Mr. Tedesco?
Good morning, Madam Chair. For the record, Matthew Tedesco of the law firm of Macamie Hosey, here on behalf of the owner, Green Revolution Realty LLC. Although Madam Chair did a roll call at this point, I do wanna take a moment just to reintroduce the members of our team who are in attendance this morning. I actually correct that this afternoon. I don't believe any are necessarily need to be sworn or testified in this matter. They're here to answer any questions that the board may have. But with me, I have Mr. Ryan Day and Victor White, on behalf of Green Revolution Realty LLC with the Hoeven Company, from Rogers Consulting, Mr. Nat Ballard with Lenhart Traffic Consulting, Mike Lenhart, and the prospective builder for this project, represented by Jessica McMahon with NVR and Ryan Holmes. First and foremost, it goes without saying, I think the board is fairly familiar with this project. The CDP was reviewed and approved by the board back in July of 2018. This team has worked tremendously hard with not only members of your staff, but also with DEPI. There's a lot of, as you can tell from the plans, Mr. Severs, and there are a lot of environmental features on this property, a lot of design challenges, trying to implement the Westphalia Sector Plan's recommendations for the property, which did rezone the property from RA to RM and LAC respectively, with a vision of the Sector Plan Development Concept Number Four envisioning even higher density than was proposed in this pending preliminary plan subdivision. With that being said, we also work very hard with your staff, Mr. Severs and Ms. Connor. I would like to just personally thank them for their review and role in this application, Mr. Burton from the Transportation Planning Section, and Dr. Stabler with the Historic Preservation Section. I think with those efforts being taken into account, you have before you what I will consider an extremely well-written, prepared staff report that really covers all the bases artfully and correctly. We have very limited minor revisions to one finding, and that relates just to typographical error in one of the tables. You can see on exhibit A, and then some very minor changes to conditions, which we can go through if needed. But as Mr. Severs said, and again, I want to applaud Mr. Severs for his review of this application in the technical staff report, we certainly agree with all the recommendations and findings and conditions, with the exception of those being requested to be modified in exhibit A. We are prepared to submit on the justifications for the two variances, one being the groups of townhouses, the other one being the removal of just one specimen tree out of a total of 14, and then the variation for the... and then the variation for the access of, um, 137 of the lots that are served by alleys without frontage on public streets. We would submit on the backup that was provided and the justifications for each of those, and I'm happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
Okay.
Well, I did, if I may, Madam Chair, if I may, I'm neglected. So putting, uh, putting a pin in exhibit A for a second, I do wanna reference exhibits D, C, D, and E. Um, given the, the fact that this project is in the Westphalia area and the importance, not only of just generally speaking, community outreach, but in particular, community outreach in the Westphalia area, um, we, during the process of this application, was really when the COVID-19 really started hitting this and everything that we've been dealing with virtually. So we took it upon ourselves and with, with some insight and, and guidance from, um, folks in the council met, and council member Davis's office, really reached out to the community, as you can see in the exhibits, to host a virtual community meeting, which we did on May sixth. Uh, we had about a half a dozen or so people attend, many of whom who attended were presidents or leaders of their respective HOA. So although the, the actual number of people who attended wasn't as large as the actual number of people that were notified, they represented a good, uh, swath of, of folks that, um, for whatever reason, didn't attend, um, the actual hearing, but their representatives were present. And, um, we, we all just felt that that virtual meeting went extremely well, to the point of we wanted to just share, and I don't need to go through with you, but we wanted to share the presentation, um, with you all of what we, what we showed them, which is exhibit C. And then obviously, we wanted to share with you the letter that we sent, which is exhibit C, and then the mailing addresses, which are D and E respectively, um, so that you could see the efforts that we went through to try to make sure that the, the, not only the local surrounding community, but all those that could potentially be, um, interested in this project were notified. So, um, that's why we have those exhibits there. We don't really need to go through them. I think Mr. Severs done a fantastic job of going through the presentation. Our PowerPoint is just a little bit, a, a little bit more information, primarily for the, the residents, so they could get a better picture of the, of development outside of a preliminary plan. Because as, as we all know, a preliminary plan is really just a line plan. Uh, we try to go above and beyond that with the community outreach in our PowerPoint, um, to make it easier for them to really get a handle of what's being proposed. So with that, Madam Chair, thank you for your indulgence, and, um, we would respectfully request, uh, the approval of this preliminary plan with conditions and findings modified in exhibit A, which I'm happy to go through if there's any questions about those.
Okay. Um, thank you, Mr. Tedesco. I'll see if there's any questions. I will tell you that when I looked at these exhibits and, and the steps, uh, I mean, you went through painstaking efforts to make sure that, um, you did as much community outreach as possible, so we see that, and then to let us know that you did that. So, um, uh, that was not lost on us, so thank you for that. Um, so let's see if there are any questions. Um, Madam Vice Chair?
Not at this time, thank you.
Um, Commissioner Washington?
No questions, but, but I would also like to thank Mr. Tedesco for providing, um, the additional information, and in particular, the look of the townhomes is, is, is very nice. So thank you, Mr. Tedesco.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Dorner?
No, no questions.
Okay. Commissioner Geraldo?
No questions. I just wanna tag along, uh, Commissioner Washington's comments as well as to thank the applicant to reach out and use virtual meeting to coordinate with the homeowner associations.
Thank you. Okay. So, um, now, let me, so Ms. Hassan, I mean, we, there's an awful lot here, 'cause you know, you have the, the quote-unquote "central park" theme and whatnot in here. I don't know that anyone needs to comment on it. It's pretty elaborate. We look forward to that when the time comes. Um, Ms. Hassan, it's our own people. I just wanna see if you had any comments. Um, Mr. Jubah?
Uh.
Mr.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Hassan. Okay, we'll start with Ms. Hassan, okay.
I would like to thank you, this applicant, to, uh, participating in the Westphalia Park Club. Uh, so this is, uh, it's a very important project for us, Westphalia Central Park, and, uh, applicant agreed to participate in the park club, and it will bring some substantial contribution in the success of this construction of this park.
Thank you, Ms. Hassan. Okay. Um, that, that part's gonna be wonderful. Mr. Jubah? Do you need to add anything?
Uh, yeah, Madam Chair. Um, I just think maybe I just misheard, um, Mr. Tedesco. Um, there's no changes with the specimen tree variance? Or is there with the exhibit A? We don't have a copy of that.
No, uh, Mr. Jubah, this is Matt Tedesco. No, there's, there's no changes in exhibit A related to any environmental conditions.
Perfect. So no further questions from you, Madam Chair?
Okay, it's just one, one specimen tree. Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Burton?
No further comment, Madam Chair.
Okay. And I assume it's the same for Ms. Smith? Okay.
All right, no further comment.
Ms. Stabler? Dr. Stabler?
Uh, no comments, Madam Chair.
Okay, we're ready for a motion.
Madam Chair, uh, this is Commissioner Washington, and I move that we adopt the findings of staff, and the finding is amended by applicant exhibit, uh, A, excuse me, uh, and approve preliminary plan four dash one seven zero three four and TCP one dash zero zero two dash two zero one eight dash zero one, variance to section two five dash one two two B one G, and variance to section two seven dash four eight zero D, and variation from section two four dash one two eight B seven A, along with the associated conditions as outlined in staff's report and as further modified by applicant exhibit number eight.
Uh, I second this, Commissioner Geraldo.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Seeing none. Madam Vice Chair?
But I.
Commissioner Washington?
I.
Commissioner Geraldo?
I.
Commissioner Dorner?
I.
The ayes have it. Five zero. Thank you. Okay, so now, we're gonna go to item nine, um, which is the Planning Assistance to Municipalities and Communities Program. Uh, so it's FY 20 approval of the project. Um, requesting financial assistance. Okay, Mr.? Oh, no, Wendy Ermanger?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair and members of the planning board. For the record, my name is Wendy Ermanger with the Neighborhood Revitalization Section of the Community Planning Division. We are requesting the planning board approve funding for an application to the Planning Assistance to Municipalities and Communities Program. Next slide? Excuse me, next slide? Thank you. Um, the town of Bladensburg submitted this application.
Wow.
Now, you can go to the next slide. Um, requesting a market analysis that will assist in their revitalization efforts. Staff evaluated this application, finding that it will further implementation of plan recommendations, and obtained a consultant bid that is within P A M C funding guidelines. Staff recommends that the planning board approve the allocation of funds, uh, for this project. This concludes staff's presentation. Next slide.
Okay. Um, thank you, Ms. Ermanger. And I, I see Mr. Sitcher is, is on too as well, or no?
Uh, yes, he is, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Um, interesting. This is pretty deja vu for me. I'm looking at these, this location down here that, that on slide number two. Uh, I remember many, many years ago, working on this with Reggie Baxter and some, and others. Um, Ms. Ermanger, you may remember.
Yes, implementation takes a long time.
Yes, yes. So, okay. Um, all right. So let's see if the board has any questions. And, and we don't have anyone from the city or signed up. So, um, Madam Vice Chair?
No questions, but someone who recently visited the public library there certainly support this. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Washington?
No questions, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Geraldo?
No questions.
Okay, Commissioner Dorner?
No questions, but as someone who recently visited the Papa John's over there. Yeah, he's been there as well. Um, no, I, I think this is a good idea. This area is, uh, has, has a lot of potential. There, there's some kind of non-compatible uses around there that are, some people might say they're less desirable or however they might wanna frame it, but, um, this has a lot of potential right in, in here to redevelop and be quite nice, 'cause it's very close to the highway to get onto the, or get down to DC or get up over to Baltimore or go elsewhere. Um, there are also some really nice, um, resources that we as a commission have. Um, there is the, the Mulruder House. It's, um, right across from the, the, the bridge right there. There's also the Bladensburg waterfront, and then a huge trail network, um, throughout there that you can get on to. So I, besides just the library, I think there's a ton of other public, um, sort, resources around there that could help, um, kind of bring together this area, and, and I look forward to seeing what staff can help.
And not, and not to mention this, that, that big monument for it down there, too.
Yes, a very important and historical monument.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
And as well as other monuments that, that give tribute to, to our veterans, um, and, and for the sacrifices that they've made.
Yes, indeed. Uh, okay, so I just, it's just nice to see this come to fruition. I remember working with, um, then Mayor David Harrington, who was the, who was the mayor of Bladensburg at the time. Uh, okay, so, um, no questions, but is there a motion to approve?
The approval, Madam.
Second.
We have, we have a motion by Vice Chair Bailey, a second by, um, who's, who got it out first?
Pick one.
Okay, so Commissioner Dorner. But clearly, everybody's, uh, on board. Um, Madam Vice Chair?
But I.
Uh, Commissioner Washington?
I.
Commissioner Geraldo?
But I.
Uh, Commissioner Dorner?
But I.
Wonderful. Okay, the ayes have it. Mr. Hunt, are you on?
Uh-oh. Yes, Madam Chair, I'm here.
Okay, Mr. Hunt, here's an important question for the day. Mr. Hunt, is there any additional business to come before the planning board for today?
Madam Chair, that's all the business before the board today.
Thank you. Everyone, please stay safe and look out for one another. Planning board is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.